Recording in progress.
Good evening, I'll call to order the November ninth, twenty twenty-three Lewisville Planning Commission meeting with a roll call, please.
Krishna Choi.
Here.
Krishna Krantz.
Here.
Krishna Basket.
Here.
Krishna Moline.
Here.
Krishna Howe.
Here.
Krishna Ostman.
Here.
Chair Brown Eyes.
Here. Great to have everybody here in person. Um, move into a motion to approve this evening's agenda, please.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, looking at the minutes for September and October, um, I had a couple of formatting, um, uh, issues where I've asked staff to revisit to be certain that the full agenda is provided on page one of the minutes for any given month. Um, and another note was... How, there's a few things, how names are bolded. Right. And how there's a line break. Right. And then there was one other thing. Um, oh, the mud, the roll call. Oh, right. Vote was not included. Right. There were, there were some motions where the roll call vote hadn't been included in the minutes. Uh, and so those will be edited into the minutes. Um, that said, does anybody have any other notes they wanted to correct or re-characterize from, from either the September or October minutes? Seeing none? Thank you all, then, most, oh, what's that?
I'll move approval of the two months of minutes that we have before us.
September and October twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Thank you, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any specific abstentions? That one, hmm, I have to check into. I don't think so. Seeing none? Seeing none, thank you. Um, do we have anybody who wanted to speak for public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay. And I don't know, uh, I don't have the online view right now as to, is there any? Nobody? Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, then we're gonna move into, uh, essentially continued business, um, although we didn't actually continue it, uh, so it's also a new item, sort of. Um, so I'll, um, I'll, I'll selectively read from our script, um, because it's not a, because we're just discussing the housing plan. So I will now open the public hearing on a request for a housing plan. What a great idea. Um, the purpose of the hearing is receive evidence regarding the housing plan and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on the housing plan. So with that said, uh, I will invite staff up for a brief recap, and then we'll just move into the discussion of it. This is one of those kind of rare times where we can just sit around and discuss something that's kind of truly planning, so.
So, thank you, I'll, I'm gonna be really brief, like, two to three minutes, because if you recall, and happy to go into more detail and kind of recap where we're at, if that's helpful, but if you recall, last month in October, we brought the housing plan before you as a discussion item. We had our consultants here do a presentation and present the final housing needs assessment. We, as staff, provided a presentation too. It was late enough in the night relative to how much information there was and, and the need to give this sort of the right amount of time for discussion, so it was essentially continued, although it's not a public hearing technically, I don't think, but it was continued um, to tonight, and so that's your only topic for tonight, we wanted to make sure there's plenty of time for discussion. Um, so I'm just gonna get you back into the headspace of, of kind of where we're at. Um, the, 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 the purpose of tonight is really to look at this, this is just a visual, I know you can't read it, but to look at the action matrix or framework that we had presented to you last time. And so we have three questions that I'll pull up on the screen here that we're sort of asking you to weigh in on. Um, but essentially, this is, if you, if you recall, sort of the foundation for the actual housing plan draft and a lot of the actions. So this is sort of the outline or the framework, and we're at the stage now where we want to know what's, what's missing, what sort of resonates with you, what more information do you need? Are there opportunities to condense some of this, for example, uh, rather than twenty-nine, maybe something less, those types of things? So that's the purpose of tonight, and again, these are the three questions in your packet. Uh, what do you think might be missing from this list? Which one of these jump out at you, resonate with you, uh, what additional information do you need? Thank you to Deborah and Tamar for providing written comments, um, on this metric, that was included in your packet as well, might give you a head start, or they may want to go first. Um, so however you want to handle it, we're just gonna sort of be in listen mode as staff and here for questions. Um, couple options are, you could go commissioner by commissioner and, and just sort of do it that way, or you could go action by action, whatever's most helpful, so let us know over here, we've got a bunch of stuff we could pull up, but we'll just sit back and listen for a moment.
For X by action, how, do you have slides that would delineate that?
I mean, I've got the whole matrix I could pull up, um, and happy to do that, if that would be helpful, um, and kind of stand up here and, and go that way. Um, the font is gonna be really small up there, but happy to do that, yeah.
Um, why don't we take a quick peek at that and see whether visually it helps us at all?
Oh, I could zoom in a bit.
Um, you have thoughts? Do you want to jump into topic or process?
Process.
Yeah, okay, please, yes.
So I kind of want to re, would like to recap a little bit of the high points of the housing needs assessment. Um, I, because we looked at it twice, I read it twice, that's what happens when you retire, you have time to read things twice, but I think it's a really important piece of work. And I want, I'm, no more foreshadowing, just like laying it out there, this is setting the stage for the comprehensive plan. It's probably some of the most important decisions that we're gonna make about the composition of the community in terms of what kind of recommendation we want to make to change policies and actions that could lead to more housing. So what we know from the report is there's, the report finds that there's a gap of twenty-four-hundred-eighty-three units of housing that will need, uh, to accommodate a population of twenty-four thousand six hundred people. So a lot of this is based, obviously, on the census. Um, it's, um, the context is Boulder County, what our share of the population is, and it's, I think it's really good metric information. I think we need to see it through a filter of, is that what we want for the community? And I've talked to people, since we're allowed to talk to people about this, on all ends of the spectrum, where some people are like, oh, four thousand more people, twenty-four thousand more units, that's not so much to have, and people that are like, no, why do we have to take any of that? And just because we're part of Boulder County's plan that says we have to do some housing? So I think our, our opportunity is to see how that feels to us with what we know about the community, and staff isn't necessarily asking us to comment on the outcome of the report, so I am, I accept the facts that are in the report. I think then it gets into the area of policymaking where we need to think about what is the best thing for the community, so I, I just wanted to preface the conversation like that.
Very much appreciate that, yeah. That's really helpful. Thanks. Other preface comments? Yeah.
Yeah, and I would, I also really appreciated there was, you know, so much great demographic data and really interesting information in the report, but I, I, I've, I've also spoken to many people who feel different ways, like, we need to attract more business in order to get more business, we need more housing, we need less, we need to control our growth. So, um, I, I, I think that what you, what you're saying, Commissioner Basket, is that we should accept the findings of the report and assume that we're going to move forward with our comments on the strategy based on a twenty-four hundred additional housing unit number? Or are you suggesting that we, and suggesting that we don't go backwards and question that? I was just wondering.
So, um, always about questioning authority. So I, I, I accept the metric and the methodology that led to the information in the report, looks pretty factual to me, but then this next step of what do we actually want to do? How do we want to change policy zoning incentives, the, the strategies list to actualize that? And I, I do want to raise the question, because I, what I just said, I think we need to say, do we need to plan for this ultimate, do we need to accept that we must change policies to accommodate the growth that the report tells us is gonna happen?
Right, I guess, so then, then, then I would like to maybe disagree a little bit in saying that we do need to question what the report says needs to happen as we evaluate our strategies.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Please, yeah. Thank you, yeah.
Um, so I, and I think this has been something, it's been a bit of a mantra of mine, is that, that, that prorata share of growth is, is just a factual number that's data from the state. I, I, I think the policies stand on their own in a lot of ways, regardless of whether we try to hit a particular target number of housing units, or we're just trying to be more inclusive and get more affordable housing, and housing types, not, that are not just affordable, but workforce, you know, workforce housing, senior housing, um, like, all of those policies are still applicable, whether you're trying to achieve two thousand units, or a thousand units, or five hundred units, any of those policies could help achieve the goals, generally. So, um, I think we could probably, that's a big conversation that we could also have with the comprehensive plan about, you know, and I think cities are trying to get away from pop, you know, population caps, there's actually state laws now that say you can't have population caps. Um, so that's just my two cents, I think focusing on, are these good policies regardless of that prorata share number, might be a good discussion still that helps form the plan.
Sorry, I'm just gonna jump in. This is free form, right?
I wholeheartedly agree with that thought, go ahead.
This is, this is free form, right? We're just talking, okay. So I, I agree with what you're saying, right? Data are data, they don't really lie, um, unless you're a really good graduate student, and then you figure out how to make the data, um, support your hypothesis, but, um, you know, to, to what you're saying, right, about, about what do we want to focus on in terms of kind of how we move forward, what are the basis of what we include in, from our considerations in the, in the, in the comprehensive plan, all those things, right? We're, we're looking at data projections, information numbers based on stuff related to Boulder County and the other municipalities within Boulder County. Just one comment or one thought that I had as I was going through all this was, you know, every, every, every piece of data that's presented in there, um, is presented in a way where it is Louisville amongst Superior, Erie, Lafayette, you know, Boulder, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I don't necessarily, I, I wanna, I wanna caution myself away from forming any opinions or perspectives based on what Louisville is doing compared to Lafayette, compared to Boulder, compared to Superior, right? And, and focus on what does Louisville want to do for Louisville? That being said, right, understanding that the maths behind the numbers that are presented in the report are true, and they just say, more people are coming, you know, things are getting bigger, um, we, we have to be considerate of what that impact is, because, you know, although it's not really included in the report to any significant degree, you know, if people don't move to Superior, Louisville, Lafayette, or Erie, they're gonna move to Broomfield, because Broomfield has no shame about building lots of houses. And, you know, there's a certain character that affects us where you might not know that one side of the street is Broomfield and the other side of the street is Louisville, uh, and, and, you know, if we want to try to develop a, an approach to growth, um, as part of a comprehensive plan, we have to consider, while not necessarily be driven by the adjacencies, even if they're not in Boulder County, so.
Thanks, yeah, I, I, 'cause I don't think our discussion this evening is gonna come up with a number, whether that's zero or two thousand plus, and so I, yeah, I think because this is the draft plan or approaches and strategies before us, then, yeah, if we focus our discussion on those, whether, that, whether this is a good approach for the city, so, yeah, please.
I, I think, so I appreciate, actually, really, um, very much so, all the, all of your comments thus far. You and your comments made me think of a couple of things, and one is, I think, when I looked at the us compared to the other communities, I guess one of the things that stuck out in that, in those comparisons, and then also in other parts of the report, was the lack of affordability in, in our town in particular, and I think that's, so that's one thing that I, I think, I'm, I'm hopeful that the housing plan can, can look at, and I think, at least for me, it starts to tie into some of the other comprehensive plan and just other issues, uh, for the town, which is sort of some inclusivity and equality issues, and I really think that once the town becomes a place where, um, the people that are able to work here can't afford to live here anymore, that, to me, is a real problem, and one of the, one of those numbers that stuck out was, and I'm not gonna get it right exactly, but it was something like twenty-nine percent of the current homeowners in the town couldn't afford their house now, or?
Seventy-four.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? Cannot afford.
Cannot.
Twenty-six percent could.
Could, yes, twenty-six percent could.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-six could, yes. Sorry, I, I miss, I miss, yeah, yeah. I thi, I mean, for me, I just, um, that's, that's a big deal, and I think, um, for me, I, I want our community to recognize this is a really important issue, and I think the whole community's gonna have to, if we want to take this as a really serious issue, I think we should, I think most people in the community feel we should. It's, we're gonna have to look at as many of these actions and strategies as we can, and it's, again, if we want to try and solve some of these things, it probably is gonna touch every part of the city and every neighborhood, I mean, I think if we're gonna try and address this, and again, I think we should, um, it's, it's, it, it will need to have a big impact on the town and, and our work on the comprehensive plan, so. Anyway, that's my little.
Perfect, yeah. No, so all, all of that said, I think with these three questions on screen, um, are there any of the strategies, uh, that, that people wanted to discuss in particular? Were there any that stuck out, um, that you felt were, well, it's hard to speak to what's missing, but, yeah.
Yeah, I, I had a question. So, you know, I, I really like a, a number of these strategies, um, you know, and I'll just use the, the numbers for them, like, number one, number five, um, I, I, I really appreciate, you know, additional opportunities for residential development as number one, number five says, support more flexible infill development. My, my question was on number two, where it's titled, adopt code allowances for more diverse housing development. Again, I like the idea of what I think the strategy is, but I'm, I'm curious about why the word allowances was, was put in there, as opposed to just adopt code that supports more diverse housing development? Is it something where the, the, the strategy was developed to kind of provide an exception from the code, or an allowance from, you know, a deviation from the code, or is it, hey, we just want to adopt a code that it, that supports more diverse housing development?
Um, yeah, it's probably, good question, it's definitely worth clarification, I think what we're getting at with that is, there's, there are areas of town where housing might be allowed as a special review use or conditional use, and I think there's been a lot of discussion about allowing housing, not broadly across the city, but in strategic areas, as a use by right, instead of that special review use, 'cause that would help spur the housing development, 'cause it would give assurances to a potential developer. It could also mean property that isn't zoned for residential, that could be rezoned for residential as well, um, that, 'cause it's not allowed, so to allow it, so that, I would interpret it as being one of those two. And again, I think, just for, for clarity, I think it's not calling for broad rezoning to residential, but looking strategically where infrastructure is, where transit is, where it makes the most sense to transition to housing.
Thanks.
Yeah, Commissioner Krantz.
Yeah, just to follow up on that one, um, it says here that, um, stakeholder engagement revealed that portions of our zoning code are outdated and in need of a major update. So I'm just wondering if we could clarify who the stakeholders were that said that, and which are the outdated parts that are, I mean, is, are there specific code numbers that are outdated and in need of a specific update?
So, I, I mean, we did, we did, we had the public, a couple of public open houses, and we did stakeholder interviews, so we don't have the consultant here, I don't know exactly what they're referring to, I think they're probably referring to the stakeholder interviews, which, I don't know, there were, you know, several dozen, we had, we had a round that was open to the general public, and then we had a more targeted round of, um, folks in the community, um, on the stakeholder interview portions. Are there portions of the code? Yes, I mean, we haven't identified them now, I mean, I could probably sit, I mean, our code was written, you know, the majority of our code was written in, I think, you know, the seventies and the eighties, maybe, you know, and it's, there have been targeted updates, but the majority of our code is several decades old, um, and I'd say doesn't reflect modern land use policy and codes that you would see in most cities.
And I think with those types of issues at this time, really, I think we want to focus more discussion on the strategies, um, because those are giant unknowns. Yeah, I'd love to welcome you guys up, so, actually, but we need you in the microphone. Um, I'd actually like to welcome you up right now, if you wanted to have something to start with, yeah, both of you, so.
Thanks so much, Sherri Summer, nine ten, South Policy Court. So out on the campaign trail, where I knocked on every door with my friend, my teammate, we talked to a lot of people, and I just say, hey, what do you love about Louisville? And, eh, like, everyone, except for, like, two people who said, I like the location, said, I love the small-town character, I love that it's easy to get around, I love that it's safe, I love that we're not congested traffic, I love, you know, these, these are the things I love, so I feel like, okay, don't mess that up. So how do we not mess that up? I like Commissioner Basket's idea that we need to look at what kind of policies are good for our town, not the numbers, because there's a lot of different ways to approach this problem, and I think that's extremely wise. There's one thing that I want to think about, though, is I knocked on many doors, and there are many, many people who've moved here a month ago, or two months ago, or five months ago, or I moved here twelve years ago, so new people are continually coming, so this is not a countywide, growth is not a countywide issue, it's like nationwide, it's international, people will move here from everywhere, and the demand is inexhaustible. And so when we say, let's solve a problem, like, how do you solve a problem that is infinite? It's like those bowls of soup that, where you're eating, and they keep pumping soup up, and you keep eating, because more keeps coming up. So how do we define it? And, um, so one thing I had thought of, I agree with Commissioner Moline, it's, it's like, people who live here should be able to work here, right? And so that's one thing that I was saying, why, how could we prioritize those people and make affordable housing for people who work here, or live here and can't afford here? But according to federal regulations, like, if you take any federal money for any projects, you can't do that. So that's illegal, so you have to, if you're doing something that includes funding sources, you can't do that, although I think that would be a great idea, like, to prioritize people who are part of our community already. We also just need to define affordability, because that's like a big nebulous thing that we're talking about, we don't even have a definition for. Yeah, we can't build our way out of this, the demand is inexhaustible, and we need to think about the fiscal impacts. And also, one last thing I want to say is, I'm really concerned for people in our town, because so many people said, you know, I own a house, but the property taxes are getting so high, the inflation is getting so bad, I don't know if I'm gonna continue to live here, so we may be thinking, oh, we need to solve a problem from other people that we don't even know yet, but we need to think about the people who do live here, and there's, you know, there are people who are on the edge, thank you.
Thank you. And do we have anybody online, just to double check? No, okay, great, thanks. Were you interested in, no, thanks. All right, so maybe, do, do you have any specific strategies that you wanted to also focus on?
Hard to go back and forth between the tiny print and the thing, but I want to make another kind of overarching statement and reaction. So how do we solve this problem the way you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? And that's what these policies will help do. And what we know is that, from the report, sixty-four percent of Louisville workers live outside the city and commute in, that's a lot of people. I don't know if we want to take care of all them, or if we want to look at the tier that says we need a thousand units of affordable housing. So I, I don't mean to, like, just spin on the metrics, but I'm, I'm trying to get us thinking in terms of what these policies and strategies actually do. So, for example, the incentive-based policies are critical to affordable housing. How can we use the money from Initiative One, Two, Three? How can we do partnerships with, whether it's Boulder Housing Authority, or whoever we do? I, I think that those policies are particularly important if the outcome that the Planning Commission wants to steer towards is, this is gonna go to those that need it the most. So there's a filter to see it through.
Can I propose a discussion that focuses on what I see as the confluence of strategies one, two, and five? So again, just to list them, strategy one, quick name, identify opportunities for residential development, number two, adopt code allowances for more diverse housing development, and number five, support more flexible infill development. So when we talk about growth, when we talk about affordable housing, when we talk about, you know, being able to support workforce housing, things like that, nothing is gonna change, or nothing is gonna move the dial on those topics when we talk about the downtown area, or any of the neighborhoods, or, or areas of town that are currently built up, or in the process of being rebuilt, um, because that's around downrange, right? Those things, those things have already happened, those houses are already there, um, and, and that's not where the big shifts are going to occur. In the contemplation of twenty-four hundred new housing units for the city, right, we can't just spread those houses apart that are existing and slide another one in, in between each one, it's going to be impacting the areas that are undeveloped or underdeveloped that, in my opinion, we need to be proactive and focus on how those areas are gonna be utilized to plan for the growth that is coming, right? It's like the, the, the movie Austin Powers, right, where he's driving the steamroller, and the guy's like, no, no, and he's, get out of the way, but he's only driving like a mile an hour, you know, so they sit there talking about it for five minutes before he gets run over, like, that's what this problem is, it's coming, we all know it's coming, growth is happening, um, and, and we need to be able to move quickly enough to get out of the way of the steamroller. So, you know, the, the areas of town that are, are undeveloped or underdeveloped, that are not currently supported, supported by the appropriate zoning to allow for the right type of residential development, I, I, I think those are the areas that somehow, if we can, you know, talk about these strategies, and I, and, and I see one, two, and five as, as kind of, you know, uh, so, coalescing around that stuff? Like, that's, that's what I think, you know, those are the ones that resonate with me in terms of strategies to have more development and focus and concerted effort, because I think that's where the, the juice is worth the squeeze.
So again, numbers aside, um, if you look at those strategies, one, two, and five, what do you see when you stare at these three questions that are on the screen?
I'm not gonna answer the second bullet point, 'cause I think I just said that, what What resonates with me? But what's missing, right, is, well, so, let me put it this way. I'm going through an effort right now, you know, in my professional life, where we are taking a novel approach to solving a problem, right? And the way we're taking a novel approach is by maybe segmenting the normal process a little bit, doing the, doing eighty percent of the work upfront, and then putting in a piece right here that says, hey, we're going to do all of our work upfront to define what we want, we're going to put this out to industry, and then, before industry fully comes back with a response, we're also going to put in this new piece that says, okay, we want now, based on your initial response, to put out another request for innovation, where we think we knew what we were asking for to begin with, you came back with an initial response, and based on those responses, now I'm going to ask you guys, and I'm going to pick this, and this, and this, and this, and this, from these different people, and now I really want you all to now innovate on these new pieces. So, you know, the normal process, right, says, hey, somebody sees a vacant lot of land, or somebody sees a property that they want to buy, they come up with an idea how they want to use it, they figure out how their idea doesn't match with the code that's allowed for that area of land, they ask for variances, they put in a request, you know, and then it gets contemplated. I think we need to kind of separate that normal process a little bit, and identify, especially for these areas that are un- or underdeveloped, you know, how can we innovate in terms of creating new opportunities to get responses from industry that are very atypical from what our code is, that to date has left these areas un- or underdeveloped, you know, outside of what we're, what we're really looking for?
So again, do these strategies as written point us towards that?
Let's discuss. I, I, I don't know, because again, I don't know what's, what's missing from those in terms of what they could be.
Okay. Commissioner Moline?
Yeah, I guess maybe one question I have, because I hear what Commissioner Troy is saying, and I'm curious, it seems like what we're maybe talking about, in at least in the context that you just raised, is looking at different places in the city. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of curious how the housing stuff will make its way into the comp plan, because it seems like that would be the next locate, like, if we were going to start talking about re-looking at, I don't know, the area east of, or excuse me, west of McCaslin, or something, you know, like, an area that currently has lots of office and that kind of stuff, but lots of vacant land as well. I mean, if we were going to do something different there, and try and address some housing, that seems like it would need to go and be an important part of the comp plan. I don't know, would you care to comment?
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. I think with the comprehensive plan, you'll often look at what you want your future land uses to be. You look at existing, existing zoning, existing uses. There's a lot of discussion about, I think we're, you know, we do have a firm, as part of our comp plan team, that's doing a, you know, a market study to understand what are market-supported uses. I think we're going to look, we are going to look at fiscal balance, that's always an important part of looking at, say, a whole district or a whole corridor, which we've done in the past. We have district, you know, we have corridor plans, but this is the opportunity to say, you know, are there changes that we could revitalize the areas? Could we make them more economically viable? Housing could be part of that mix. I don't think, if you want economic development and economic vitality, I don't think that exclusively means commercial zoning. I think that was one way to think about it, but in the way things develop now, and the way our, our market, if you really study our market potential, and the types of businesses that could be within our commercial corridors, you know, residential can be part of that vitality mix, to make the commercial viable. And so we're going to study that, and try to understand what the right mix is, but that, there could be some synergy with housing and economic vitality.
One, sorry, one, one specific example of how this could play into the comp plan is, so one of the strategies is to...
Closer to the mic?
Is it not on?
My closer to you? Yeah, it's on, but it's not picking up yet.
One of the strategies is to sort of develop criteria for what these appropriate areas are that could change to residential. So this is incremental, right? But, but we're hopeful that the housing plan, for example, has some of that criteria in terms of being served by transit, some definition of what underutilized is, some other factors to where when we go into the future land use map, sort of exercise of the comp plan. The comp plan, this doesn't assign land use changes in itself, it just sets the foundation, the comp plan does that, but that could give us a huge head start for looking at the future land use map and figuring where those areas are. So I think there's several pieces like that, that are embedded in the action framework that we could parse out if you want, but it's a great comment, totally on our mind.
So those are the strategies that really resonate with me, to answer that question.
Commissioner Grantz?
Should we go through, I feel we haven't heard from Commissioner Osterman or Commissioner Howe yet. Should we go through and just answer these questions really quickly? Each of us? I provide, I had, I provided mine in writing, so I was just, I haven't heard what everybody else thinks of these, if everybody else has answers to these questions, I appreciate Commissioner Troy's, but I'd like to hear what...
Can you recap yours, maybe?
Sure.
Yeah?
I mean, but I didn't necessarily mean to jump in and start myself, but I'd be happy to. Yeah, for, interestingly, I thought that commis, that, that Strategies Three and Six resonated with me the most, which is interesting. What I thought was missing was strategies that addressed specifically people who were displaced, or maybe still displaced by the Marshall Fire. And the additional information that I wanted, I put in a list of things that I thought might be good to, for us to evaluate all of them, and that's more of a broad question. I thought it would be, I thought that in addition to the column that says income level served, we could add some other columns that would be things like how much, you know, like, impact to the community, long-term costs, what are the economic impacts, how does it affect our tax base, how does it score by environmental attributes? And I thought we could look at this, we could evaluate, the information that's missing is, a lot of it is in the report, but it's not in the matrix. And I think that adding, like, if we could each give a note on, well, yeah, this one is great for sustainability, this one is great for low, you know, low cost, more houses, you know, and we could evaluate it that way.
Thank you.
But yeah.
Did anybody else want to actually call out any strategies that resonate with them? Or, or that they have particular concerns about? I'm hesitant to jump into some of the actions. I think we want to try to keep it at the strategy discussion, perhaps? Yeah. Commissioner Osterman?
Yeah, thanks. I could just jump in at a high level about the strategies that resonated. So Strategy One, rezoning areas of Louisville, I agree with other commissioner comments, that resonated. I think that we would get a lot of bang for our buck with that strategy. Strategy Two also resonated, so thinking about how codes can be updated and changed to allow more diverse housing. Strategy Three, supporting income-restricted housing, I thought was promising. And then also Strategy Five, so focusing on more flexible infill development. And in general, the strategies that were prioritizing infill development over developing greenfield were, were more, resonated more with me, and I'd like to see more of that. But I will say that within each of those strategies, when you get down to the action level, some actions resonated more than others. So still, kind of, as a broad strategy, there wasn't one where, you know, every box was checked, right? And then maybe just, while I'm still on the mic, if I could answer, for me, the question about what's missing and additional information. So I, I did have a question about inclusionary housing and the ordinance that we have, because I didn't see, well, first off, I didn't see any recommendations about increasing the, the ordinance level, so we currently have twelve percent. And I'm recalling the, the item that came to us maybe about a year ago, and at that time, we, we were saying, well, let's wait until we have the housing study, and we, until we have the data to really back any increase in the ordinance. And so I did feel like, with, with the data that was presented in the housing study, that still it wasn't strong enough to know if that topic comes up again, what would be the recommendation? So for me, that was the one piece that was missing, and I'm curious if there will be additional data, or, or, for example, if it wasn't proposed as a strategy intentionally because it was felt by the housing study authors that that wasn't a viable strategy, then, then it would have been helpful to have the rationale for that.
Yeah, can I, on to that? That's a, that's a great comment. I mean, that's been a really big focus of the study with the consultants, and I'm scrolling through, and I actually don't see that, but we've talked a lot to them. I think you're going to see in the final report that there's going to be recommendations on those types of bonuses, so within the inclusionary, I mean, the idea is, is, you know, if, if we're trying to work on a development, what's meaningful to them as far as a bonus to get more affordable housing? I think the, the preliminary information we're getting is that if you go to a cash-and-lou model, instead of a build-it-on-site model, that there, that could be more meaningful, but it would be, yes, instead of the twelve percent, we get cash-and-lou for an equivalent of a higher percent, is what we're probably going to recommend. And then, you know, there'd have to be some bonus to the developer, more height, a little bit more density, something to make that more viable. So they, they've done pro forma economic analysis, that'll be in the final report, that demonstrates that's a good tool, at least on this market. Does that make sense? Hopefully, yeah? Okay.
Ms. Summer, yeah, please, join us again. Thanks.
I'm not sure that I understood that these ideas are part of the strategies, I just want to bring them up. Maybe repurposing existing buildings or re-evaluating them. So for example, office buildings that are vacant, in many cities, they're turning those into affordable housing. So those are existing buildings that don't need to be built, and we don't need to burden any greenfields with those. Also, I talked to Anne Marie Jensen of the East Boulder Housing Alliance, I think it's called, and she was going to advocate at the county level that cities could choose the kind of affordable housing types that they want. And one thing that she thought, that I think is really ingenious for Louisville, is that we could take money and buy existing small houses. Because that would be, those are, those are houses where people would be integrated into neighborhoods, they would be in the community, they wouldn't be off in some other satellite area, and we wouldn't, I mean, they could go to, you know, be in the schools, be in the neighborhoods, and we preserve the small-town character. I just have one question that I don't understand about this twelve percent amount of housing, which is, to get that twelve percent, you have to build seventy-eight percent, is that right? Of non-affordable housing, market rate, right? And so you just keep getting more and more housing, and the amount of affordable housing you're getting is not very much. So I don't know if that's a really good path to go down. It's like, maybe we should just focus more on what we really need, which is the affordable housing, not just the small percentage. Thanks.
Thanks. Ms. Bedell, if you ever want to speak, feel free to just wave. Yeah, yeah, please, come on up.
Oh, hi, I'm Cindy Bedell, I'm a resident of Louisville, and I just have a question. So I find my really old notes here from a few years ago about how much each new resident costs the city, and this was Colorado Department of Local Affairs, long, long time ago, ninety-seven. But back then, the statistic was each new resident would cost at least ten thousand two hundred. So I'm curious, do we have the current numbers? How much would each new resident cost the city of Louisville? Thank you.
Thank you. That's an interesting way of looking at things. I know, but the fiscal model is a challenge.
Right, yeah, I mean, we have the complex fiscal model that basically answers that question, which is, you know, yes, I think the basic assumption is when you bring in residents, there's demand for new services, and, you know, generally, the taxes that come in from that resident directly, either through direct spending, or their property taxes, you wouldn't anticipate that would fully pay for their services. So that's the basic answer to that question. I think what we've been looking at is trying to look, again, more, more broadly or comprehensively, that if you bring residential into a parcel, and you do that fiscal analysis within the bounds of the parcel, you're, yeah, you'd probably assume some negative fiscal balance to the city if it has no commercial-supporting development within that parcel. But if you look at what that, if you look at a, an underutilized corridor that has a lot of vacancies, or underperforming commercial properties, and you bring in residential development, that's not going to get captured in the model, that that residential development kind of revitalizes the area and makes it a more attractive place, so you get more people coming into those existing commercial developments, or fill those vacant buildings. Our fiscal model doesn't capture that revitalization. It's kind of like a secondary or tertiary, you know, effect within the corridor that comes from, you know, repurposing, especially in infill parcel.
Well, and it's also kind of, I mean, if you boil it down, it's just a function of, you look at the city budget, where does the money come from? In any situation where there, where we benefit from sales tax, from commercial properties, anytime we add more housing without a measured amount of commercial, then it's just, it's just raw numbers that, yeah, it will, it will cost more. I wonder if DOLA has updated that number since ninety-seven, but...
And I wanted to add, one of the things we've noticed with our fiscal model is if, if the value of the housing is quite high, like, near our average housing cost, you start to trend towards a positive fiscal balance. So if you're building eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar housing product, it may be fiscally positive. So we're also balancing kind of our desire for social policy of wanting affordable housing, so that's going to tend to be less fiscally positive, but we may have good reason, you know, through other policies that we want to achieve, to have that more affordable product. If that makes sense.
If I could, is that, is that because of the, like, use tax and the...
Yeah, so the amount of tax, so yeah, if you're, if you're, if you're having an eight or nine hundred thousand dollar home, the way the fiscal model works is, well, there's the, the use tax of when you build it, but then, then there's the ongoing property tax, which we get a small amount of, but it's much higher for the city on a nine hundred thousand dollar home. And there's an assumption about household spending. So the, somebody who can afford a nine hundred thousand dollar home, they're going to spend more money in the city, we're going to get more sales tax. So that's where it looks fiscally, like, with no commercial development at all, you could have a fiscally positive residential development, but it's very, very high-end. And that's, you know, we don't necessarily want to promote that just for the sake of fiscal balance, because we have competing policies.
Yeah, interesting.
And that's also where it dives into a comment I made a month or two ago about, you know, the commercial development, appropriate residential development begets commercial development, right? And good commercial development increases the catchment area for all of the commercial uses within, or around that development, right? So we do the appropriate housing, more businesses want to come, when we get more and better businesses, our catchment area for people coming to those businesses increases beyond just the additional houses that were created, you know, especially in areas where we are in, in proximity or close to other municipal, municipal interfaces, right? The McCaslin corridor, right, as, as Ms. Summer said, right, we've got a lot of empty commercial properties there. When we have additional appropriate residential development, and those commercial properties get revitalized, right off of thirty-six, you know, everybody going between Denver and Boulder, hey, that's a great stopover, you know? On the east side, when we're looking at, at Courtesy Road, you know, our catchment area expands to include areas of Lafayette and Erie, and, you know, other places like that. So I, I think, I, you know, that goes back to, again, the ones that resonate with me of One, Two, and Five, where I see that opportunity for the appropriate zoning to support... one, two, and five, where I see that opportunity for the appropriate zoning to support infill, you know, to support additional appropriate residential development where the biggest strides are going to be made for the lowest amount of effort, in my opinion.
Commissioner Kress, I saw you kind of raising your hand at some point.
No, that's all right.
Oh, okay, great. All right.
I was just trying to find the number.
Oh, okay, great, thanks. Any other? So as far as more feedback, what are you thirsting for?
Well, you know, it's really these three questions. I think that, you know, you can take it wherever direction you want. I think we're looking for, basically, we're taking your feedback and other folks' feedback to inform the actual draft of the housing plan. So we're logging all of your comments. I think the question's again, is there something missing, which I'm not hearing? Is there something big missing? It seems like there's just nuance in each of these things that needs to be embedded. So I think that we're getting the feedback that we were looking for and happy to keep listening. This is very helpful.
I would provide one other comment that kind of just solidified in my mind. You know, when I went, read through, and similar to Commissioner Osterman, the statement about some of the actions don't always, you know, all of the actions don't always check the box of the specific strategy. I think that some of this stuff might have some additional clarity if we were able to, and maybe, again, it's not for each particular action, but maybe for a broader strategy, even identify a potential area of the city where that strategy would have a significant impact, right? Where that particular strategy would see a potential gain, you know, through this, or this, or this type of implementation, or this, you know, type of action.
That's great, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to kind of jump onto that as well, which is, I'm having a hard time sort of like in my mind prioritizing these, a strategy over one or the other. But I do feel like some are going to be, and I mean, I guess I'm sort of stating the obvious, but some of these are going to be more appropriate in different parts of the town. And again, I think that, to me, is, sort of starts to tie this back to the comprehensive plan and where, and what neighborhoods may, looking at kind of adjusting single-family zoning or, you know, those kinds of things. There might be places like that in town that that's going to be suitable for, and then other places where that won't be. And so it's, so at least for me, many of the strategies resonate with me, but they're going to be, they're going to play out differently across the city, I guess, is what I see. I'm sort of...
So, for instance, 5.3 allow ADUs both attach and detach on all single-family lots citywide.
Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah, that's a good one, yeah.
An issue, in many ways, yeah. Yeah, please, come on up.
Yeah, you know, the housing open houses are fine and all, but I think since, you know, just what I've observed over the last 10 years is that, you know, there's just kind of sometimes there's this push to get things done. I'm not saying that you're doing this right now. There's a push to get things done, and it's sort of like, we're just going to push this through. And then, like, things fail a lot. And it's like, I really like this deliberative tone you're taking tonight because I really think that, like, if things are going to affect certain neighborhoods, it could be really good to have listening sessions with those neighborhoods and be like totally transparent, build trust. Like, if we want things to succeed, people want to succeed at things, but there's a lot of mistrust. And I think that, you know, some of it's very rightly deserved. And I just think this is a great opportunity to build our community as we're working on policy and working on physical strategies to actually build the heart of our community if we're patient and listening.
Thanks.
Maybe I'll jump in and just say a couple words. Yeah, I think some of the things that, I think ultimately the goals that we want to do is preserve some of the things everybody likes in the city. And the biggest challenge that I have is many of these actions and solutions compromise some of those things that we value in the city. And so we have to be very careful and thoughtful about how to create solutions that it would be great if it would enhance those things. These things are things that were mentioned before, like safety, accessibility, lifestyle, work-play balance. And when we say lifestyle, we say maybe balancing population with open space and parks. Like, these kind of things are things people like in the city, among many other things. So the cautions are, and as I read through these and I've looked at them, I see few that improve those things, but many that maybe increase the population density, which is not a bad thing, but if done cautiously, it can be done right. It may be increase traffic, increase demands on utilities. There are existing problems with water and electricity, increasing demand on city infrastructure and services. So when I look through these, I don't see many of the, I think this is a great outline and may be beneficial to go through each one, and there'd be many thoughts about each one, and we probably don't have time to do that. But I struggle to find many of the actions that actually help us get to preserving those things that we all like in the city. For example, 1.1 rezone and repurpose, I really like that idea, but how do you do that on a lot that's privately owned? Right, a commercial building that's privately owned? Would they voluntarily remove their structure, pay for the cost for that, and put up residential, what we call affordable housing, for less revenue? I don't know. These are, and you can go through each one of these and say, ADU, boy, that would be another big discussion. So that's what I'm having trouble balancing with each one of these items. I haven't, I wasn't able to find one that said, man, that really would solve the problem. And maybe it's a culmination of the ones that would solve it for me.
I guess my thought is that, in general, this is solid enough to move forward with and that, right, there's process. It's not, none of these actions is going to happen without a process involved and input, additional input and outreach and any of that. So it's not that somebody's going to sit downstairs in this building and just start with a red pen and start marking up neighborhoods. So while I think actually it is very important that, especially now, change is hard and that when we start talking about making changes to stuff that already has been developed, you know, non-greenfield development, that the outreach becomes even more important citywide. And I'm sure, I trust that will be all part of this, so. Additional thoughts?
And change can be good, you know? I mean, like, I remember being here 30 years ago and downtown was pretty different than it is now. And, you know, we've seen, I mean, the town grew, of course, in over those last, over these last 30 years. And downtown has really responded, for example. And so I guess I appreciate that, and I know, I mean, I worry about where change is going to take us to, but it can also be something that can improve the town, so.
Definitely. I mean, you think about our areas right now that have kind of empty commercial spaces. Those are not the small-town character places that we love, right? So, yeah.
I think, just real quick, I wanted to respond to your comment, and it's another great example of the connection to the comp plan. We're talking about future land use and all that, but we're talking about values early on. And so to get at the core of what people value most, and then the idea is that's your foundation, right? And you sort of calibrate policies around that. So I think, not to punt on that, but that's a huge sort of like connective tissue between what we're doing and the comp plan is those values-type discussions.
Be interesting to see how the comp plan differs from that in 2013. Of the top three priorities that citizens mentioned was open space and parks. Yeah, so it'd be interesting to see how things have changed. I think that the comp plan, as Commissioner Basket was saying, the comp plan is probably going to be a culmination of all these things. We've done so many master plans, transportation, preservation, sustainability, action plan. There's so many master plans that have been created over the last five or 10 years, and this is kind of the culmination of it. And I'm sure the comprehensive plan will reflect all of those plans. So it's a tricky one, for sure.
Please.
Yeah, I feel like there's still, I'm not sure if you got down that we were still missing some things. And I mean, I understand it's great to move forward, but I loved what Commissioner Osterman said about us addressing the possibility of having an increased affordable housing percentage in exchange for rezoning, and if there's incentives that have to go along with that. I also liked what Ms. Summer said about us putting, considering repurposing office buildings and purchasing small houses as a city to preserve as affordable. I'm just kind of recapping things that I wanted to make sure that we considered. And I also wanted to just, I don't see any of these actions that directly affect the fire, people who were displaced because of the fire and have not been able to move back yet. So I just thought those were a few things that we're missing. And while I've got the microphone, I was just going to just ask about, just reiterate about the additional information that we need. I think it would be really cool if we looked, if we had, if we, I think the easiest way for me to visualize things, I like to visualize things in charts and com, and matrices, and other people like to read it. But I, to me, I want to see how we rank all these as they impact the things that are important, like our small-town character, our need for open space, our need for a buffer between cities, our need for access to transit. What, these other, there was a section in our report, I can't remember, it was section number five, that really was great. It took out the sections of our, the policies in our comprehensive plan, the policies in our sustainability plan, and it laid out all these things that are important to us. So could we intersect those two matrices and rank these in terms of those policies that are, that have been determined to be, I know those are changing, but we've got a transportation plan, and all those things that were related to housing were laid out, but they're not integrated into the strategies. And I would, I think for me, it would be really helpful to see it, and I think for the public to be able to see and prioritize these things. Because we've been asking people in these open houses to, what do you think is most important? But I don't think they're laid out. These are the ones that are really going to help us reduce our greenhouse gases. These are the ones that are going to help us, you know, that maintain our greenfield spaces, you know? I'd like to see it that way.
I think that's a great comment, and I also wanted to say that one of the things we'll be doing when you actually see the housing plan is looking at a better prioritization of these. And there's 29 things to do, to break them down by near-term, long-term priority. I think that's a good way of looking at it, is to see how they intersect with the other plans as a sort of metric for how to prioritize. So I think that's really helpful.
And can I just add one more thing, just what I feel really strongly about? I feel really uncomfortable, and it's funny that we started this conversation with Commissioner Basket, said that, that these are the numbers, this is what we can expect for our prorata share of the growth of Boulder County. You know, I don't feel, I would love to see this as like a low-growth, a medium-growth, and a high-growth scenario rather than just one scenario, because I'm afraid that, because this is a housing needs assessment, when I read it, it looked like we were projecting that this is what we need. And I'm not sure that what's in those numbers, that we need 1,300 homes to serve people above 100% of the AMI. You know, that's what it says in our report. I just feel like we, you know, I would like to see, I would like to see like a difference, like different scenarios and not, those DOLA projections aren't dead-on. I just, I would like for the public to see a range rather than those numbers.
Please, Commissioner Basket.
I think that's a great idea. And it'll be interesting to see if we can do something with that. The comment that I was going to make had to do with what's missing and what was alluded to kind of with acquiring houses, is that I don't believe there's any action strategy in there about forming a housing authority or having some function in Lewisville, which I'm not at all advocating because we're a small town, and I think that's way too much to take on. But I think what we need to remember when we think of some of these strategies, we always have to come back to the resources that are available. And that one made me nervous, acquiring housing, and somebody's got to purchase those deals, manage them, make them permanently affordable, or whatever it is that we're trying to achieve. So am I correct that forming a housing authority or forming some new arm of service is not included in the strategies?
Yeah, that is not included. You know, the city did have a housing authority, maybe even 10 years ago. It hasn't been that long, that we basically gave all our assets to the Boulder County Housing Authority, and we have an IGA with them, and they are housing, they are, they are our provider. The Boulder County Housing Authority is our provider through that IGA. So they, and we're actually working on another IGA with the city of Boulder and others where they can help us manage potential ownership programs and deed-restricted programs that we're trying to accomplish. So we're working with those bigger communities that have more resources and knowledge to help us out.
Follow on specifically to staff? Is that in the strategies and actions?
The...
What you just said about the partnerships?
I don't know that it's explicitly called out, but I think in order to be successful in a lot of the actions, we will need to do that. Like, if, you know, if...
Partner with Boulder County?
Yeah, it's not in the strategies, we can definitely add it. I think it's, we probably don't see it because it's assumed to us that if we don't do that, we actually won't be able to do some of these things, but I think it's a great thing to add. It's to look for those partnerships.
Yeah, I would ask, try to figure out where to add that in. Got partnerships in there, I know, but not specific.
It's, yeah, yeah, 6.3 has, but I think it could be more specific. I think that's a really good point.
That's an important one, thanks. Any other thoughts missing? Have any of your thoughts from either of you? Do them, yeah? Okay. Great. Well, how are people feeling? Where does that leave us? Sounds like staff, you're, Jeff and Director Zakaria, you're comfortable with where it's at at this point? I know you've listened to a lot of other feedback from other groups, including council at this point, so...
This is great. You kept it at the right level, you gave us specific things to work on and your overall sort of comments, so this has been great. We'll be coming back to you, don't have a date yet, kind of depends on the drafting, how the drafting is going, but probably January, come back to you with a final plan or a draft plan. I think that's the target, but not sure yet. But this has been helpful, and this will definitely inform the drafting, so appreciate it.
Great, thank you. People are comfortable with wrapping it? Yeah, all right? All right. With that said, then we'll just move into planning commission comments. Rarely we have many comments, but, yes, please.
I have a question for staff. What is the status of the comp plan? Have you put an RFP out? Have you hired somebody?
Yeah, we do have a consultant under contract, and we're still kind of organizing, figuring out what the project structure is going to look like in terms of advisory committee. All that kind of stuff is happening right now, what our engagement plan is. So we're very early. We do have, we do plan to come to planning commission with an update. That might be January as well. I'm not sure if it's going to be December, we'll be ready for it yet. But there'll be a more formal, big update to planning commission soon. But we have a consultant team, we're just sort of getting organized internally still.
And who is the consultant?
So the lead consultant is called Design Workshop. And they've certainly done comp plans around the country, and they're a Colorado firm. And they've got certainly subconsultants focused on specific areas, Faren Peers is their transportation subconsultant, they have an environmental subconsultant as well, which is a good resource to have in terms of resilience and hazard mitigation, all those kinds of things. So they've got a full team, and, yeah, it's a big project and a big team, so trying to get organized.
Who is doing the public involvement?
And who is doing the public involvement as part of that consulting team?
I think Design Workshop is leading it, yeah, yeah.
They've got special expertise in that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any staff comments?
We did have, I think, in your agenda, just to let you know, next month, a scheduled item is we're going to plan to bring you a zoning code amendment to address PUDs. And this is an in-the-weeds, jargon-y bureaucratic thing, but important. Expedited PUDs, meaning clarification of when somebody has to go to preliminary versus final and go through those two steps. So, that's something we've been meaning to clean up for a while. So, that's, I think, the only thing on the agenda for December, but there might be other things that come on, we're not sure yet.
Right, thank you. With that, then, I would entertain a motion, ah, please, Commissioner Basket.
I, I've got one more thing, and then I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No, 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 please have that, oh, well, no.
I went to the State of the City last night, and Mayor Maloney and Mayor-elect Chris Lay both spoke to the importance of the comp plan. And the, I think the audience was about 30% citizens and 60% businesspeople who also may be residents. But it was a Chamber of Commerce-sponsored function, so the audience was businesspeople. It was an excellent forum with dialogue. So, I, I just wanted to stress that there are elected officials are holding up, this is being a really critical path-well-taken opportunity to, to do the comp plan.
Great, thanks for sharing that. Thought I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in second?
Second.
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.